Yes.
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 The time is 7:32 PM. Next item of business is the organization of the Board for fiscal year 2018-19. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of chairperson of the Board.
I nominate Malvina Kay.
Second.
I do.
I move that nominations be closed for the position of chairperson. I second that.
I have a motion to approve the nomination of Ms. Malvina Kay for election as chairperson of the Board.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
I'm fine.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, good evening. The next item on the agenda, the floor is now open for nomination for the office of vice chairperson of the Board.
I nominate Ms. Jennifer Boyd. Second.
It's been moved and second to nominate Ms. Jennifer Boyd.
I move that we close nominations for vice chairperson.
Our second, that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and second for Ms. Boyd to be the vice chairperson of the Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Congratulations to you. I'll keep you busy, I promise.
I'm sure you will.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the appointment of the clerk.
I recommend the Board appoint Ms. Deborah B. Wright to the office of school board clerk and then Ms. Wright be bonded in an amount no less than $10,000 with premiums paid by the school board.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Holmes and second by Ms. Boyd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now we have the appointment of the deputy clerk.
Recommend the Board appoint Mr. G. David Baker Jr. to the office of deputy clerk and that Mr. Baker be bonded in an amount no less than $10,000 with premiums paid by the school board.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Boyd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Next we have approval of a designee to attend school board meetings in the absence of the superintendent.
Recommend that Dr. Marceline O'Catlett, deputy superintendent, be approved as the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Holmes. Okay, second by Ms. Reeve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next we have approval of the agenda. Ms. Reeve has asked that we add an item of new business for discussion of the school calendar. And where do we want to put that? Does that... Under new business? Okay, all right. Are there any other changes to the agenda? May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Boyd, second by...
Second.
Ms. Palmer Boyd. Any question? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Second. I mean, a nays? Okay, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is establishment of the regular meeting. Time and place.
Recommend that the first Monday of each month at 6:30 PM be designated as the regular meeting time for the school board and that these meetings be held at Walker Grant Center unless otherwise announced. A list of proposed meeting dates is provided with the agenda materials.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Is that you? Yeah, okay. Moved by Ms. Holmes and second by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion?
Yes. I think it's worth discussing, some of these meeting dates have been changed because of calendar conflict and some because our superintendent can't be here. One of the dates that's proposed as an alternate is October 8th, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, sometimes known as K'ul'as Day. So, you know, it is a federal holiday and I just wanted us to discuss whether or not we think that we should have the meeting on that day or October 1st.
What was the reason for... What was the reason for October 1st not being a... That's, is that when you're away?
That's a fall professional conference for superintendent. October 1st, 2nd and 3rd.
Any other discussion? From the chair's perspective, we may want to consider not meeting on a federal holiday. I'm open to what other Board members...
Doesn't matter to me. Doesn't matter. But honestly, I'll be working anyway, but I know that a lot of our, you know, parents who are federal employees.
Okay, do you want to amend the current motion?
All right, I'll amend the current motion that we adopt the calendar with the exception of...
With the change.
With the change of March, of October 8th to October 1st.
Is there a...
I'll second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to accept the calendar with the change of the October meeting being on October 1st instead of October 8th. All in favor? Any more discussion? All in favors, aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. The next item... Okay, I gotta remember to vote, I'm sorry, Debbie. It's the minutes, I believe. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2018 regular school board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Okay, who moved? Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, the next item is recognitions. Oh, word of the month.
Before we start with the word of the month, we have a video to show you. Thank the Chair for suggesting that the admin, administrative team do the word of the month, which is patriotism. Tough act to follow was Ms. Boyd last year. So, and it fell on my shoulders because when I said any volunteers, everybody ran. So, I got to do it. But as I think about patriotism, there are a lot of definitions of patriotism. But when I think about patriotism, I think about something that I feel. And the pride I feel or the joy I feel. And I remember especially the day that my son returned from Iraq and flying to Colorado and seeing that big transport plane touchdown on the runway and the commandant or whatever they call of the base standing at the bottom of the stairs and shaking the hand of each one of those soldiers as they walked off the plane. And the emotions that, that just came forward with that. So, with that in mind, I thought we would do a video for you. I hope you enjoy it. And here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so, my fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country.
That was very well done.
Wow.
You may be appointed again.
I mean, you didn't pass out tissues or anything first. Not okay.
What a great idea to make that change. Thank you, Dr. Melton.
Marcie is volunteering for next year.
So I have a recognition. So, Ms. Reeve, on behalf of the Board, I would like to thank you for serving as Chair in this last...
You're welcome.
...fiscal year. There's going to be a brick placed at Mari in your name. Okay?
Okay.
I appreciate it. It's been my pleasure.
Great job. Okay, the next item on the agenda is hearing of citizens. Do we have someone? Great. Is it Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Howard, I will need you to state your name and address for the Board's records.
Okay. Does this go higher or is, do I have to... Does this move? Okay. Stacy Howard, 205 Brayhead Drive.
Okay. We also ask that you limit your comments. First, we welcome you and we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. And we have an electronic notice that will alert you when there's 30 seconds remaining so that you can, you know, move forward and bring enclosure to your discussion.
Okay.
And normally, the Board will not respond or say anything, but don't take that personally. That's just what we do and welcome.
Okay.
On you.
Thank you. Chairperson Kay and members of the Board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the student athletes and families of the James Monroe Track and Field Team. We respectfully request that you revisit the personnel decision to remove Tammy Clark from her position as track coach and allow her to continue to shoulder the dual responsibilities of coach and athletic trainer, in which capacity she has performed both functions for 17 years. If it was your assessment that there was a problem with the status quo and you felt that a change was needed, it was incumbent upon the Board to assure that our student athletes were not shortchanged. Ms. Clark has put in countless hours over the years supporting JM's student athletes. She was not there merely for a stipend. In fact, she has volunteered as indoor track coach for several years when no one else stepped up. Her experienced guidance has produced numerous nationally ranked track and field athletes who got their start at our James Monroe. She is a mainstay not only in the JM Track and Field family, but in the Battlefield District Track and Field community. Again, please rethink your decision with our team and the school community in mind. We are fortunate to have both a qualified trainer and coach in Tammy Clark. Let's conserve our valuable resource so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have a trainer supporting a team without a coach. I'd like to present additional letters of support from community members who could not attend this meeting. Thank you for consideration. Who, should I... Okay. Do I approach?
Yes, you may.
We won't bite. The next item. The next item on the agenda. I'm sorry. Oh, you have, we have anyone else? Oh, we have more? Okay, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Thomas Hayden, 428 Morningside Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia, 2241.
Great. I'll give you the same instructions. You have three minutes. And 30 seconds before that time, buzzer, the electronic buzzer will go off. Don't be offended if we don't say anything, we appreciate that you're here. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the School Board for giving me this time. My name is Thomas Hayden. I'm a kindergarten teacher here at Fredericksburg City Schools. I'm also a product of Fredericksburg City Schools. Throughout my time as a scholar here, there were many people who inspired me and made me the man I am today. Some of them were teachers like Mr. Crowley and Mrs. Crowley, who showed me that I had great potential in math even when I didn't think I did. Some were administrators like Dr. Northern and Mr. Upberco, who looked out for me, knew my name and cared for me, even though I was just one of many students at the school. Some were also coaches and mentors like Coach Survey and Herman K. Griffin, who saw that I enjoyed being behind a microphone and liked to announce games for James Monroe High School. And despite my stutter, which with their confidence helped me overcome, allowed me to live out my dreams as announcer, which I continue today for King George High School and the Fredericksburg Grizzlies. Tonight I'm going to talk about someone who was inspired and has helped coach and mentor scholars just like me. My nephew is currently a rising sophomore here at James Monroe High School. He participated in four sports this year, lettering in three of them and getting all state honors in one of them. His love is track and field. He talks about track all the time. He watches track on TV. He absolutely loves it. This winter, he almost was not able to participate in the track program because they didn't have a coach who was willing to do it. But Mrs. Tammy Clark, Ms. Tammy Clark stepped up and took over the program. The program had no money for Ms. Clark, but she volunteered her time, her money and her heart for those athletes. Almost every weekend, they had to go all over the state participating in multi-day events and she was set up and arranged hotels, team dinners, and some of that, some of that came out of her own pocket and she was not reimbursed for it at all. She loves track and she loves her athletes. I've heard her saying, I've heard, I've read her on social media that she refers to her track athletes as her track family. Unfortunately, the powers that be are saying that Mrs. Clark will no longer be allowed to participate as track coach, saying that her duties as an athletic trainer take up too much of her time. She's been doing it for 17 years without track being a distraction. I don't understand why it's considered a distraction now. I implore you to allow Mrs. Clark to continue working with her track family. She showed the same passion and love to my nephew and track athletes that Mr. Survey and Mr. Griffin showed me when I was in school. Thank you for your time, you have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come forward, please. Please state your name and address for the Board's records.
Daniel Forjan, 1115 Gray Oaks Lane.
Thank you. Again, you have three minutes. Electronic buzzer will give you the 30-second warning to bring closure to your statements. Thank you for coming. You may begin.
Thank you, ma'am. Hello again to you guys who don't know me. My name is Daniel Forjan. I graduated James Monroe High School in 2014 and I just graduated from the University of Mary Washington this past year. And I too was a little bit puzzled when I had heard about this decision. As, as somebody who's one of our athletes, I really can't understate the, the benefit that she provided us and really all the student athletes that were at James Monroe High School. She, she took a kid who was, who was afraid to play school sports because of his weight issues, self-confidence issues, a kid who was stubborn, shy, beyond lazy, and turned that around 180 degrees in me. She worked with me through surgeries, ligament tears, negative attitudes, terrible mindsets, and she helped me see potential in myself that I never knew I had. And this wasn't just in high school. As some of you may know, the University of Mary Washington had to use James Monroe High School's track as ours was getting redone. And every day I would come out there, she would still come out, she would still help me, you know, tape my wrists up, she would still give me drills to do, critique my technique. There is, there's nobody with more passion and more enthusiasm for the sport of track and field than Ms. Clark. She turned a kid with, with no passion to do any sport into somebody who was top 10 collegiate shot putters in the nation last year. And it's what she does. She treats us like, like we're her family. I can't, again, I can't overstate that enough. She's treated me like I was one of her own kids for the past eight years that I've known her and that I've competed by her. It's, and that's how she does all her athletes. We're all like family. And as her athletes, a lot of the people that I've talked to that have already graduated through with me, Cherie Turner, Nelson King, Demonya Jackson, Ta'Kuan Aylers, none of us ever felt like she wasn't there when we needed her to be in practice. I honestly can't even remember a time when she, she left practice to go take care of another student, which, which we know all takes precedent. She has so much passion for coaching and I've been all around the country. I've met so many different throws coaches at so many different participation levels and I honestly have not found a coach yet that cares or that rivals her enthusiasm for the sport. And if she is no longer able to coach, it'll severely handicap those of us who found a future in throwing.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks again to all of the citizens that came out. Is there someone else? Oh, okay, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the Board's records.
Tammy Clark, 204 Hudgens Road.
Okay, Ms. Clark, you have three minutes and 30, when you have 30 seconds left, Ms. Wright will let you know so that you can bring closure. Welcome and you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the School Board. I've come to this meeting this evening to ask that I be allowed to continue to do what I've been doing for the past 18 years. And that's coaching, it was 18 years, coaching James Monroe Track and Field and being the James Monroe Athletic Trainer. I take pride in all the jobs I have with the city schools. In the classroom, I try to teach my kids that they're, they're the best and that translates over into training and to track and field. My experience over the last 18 years showed that I'm capable of balancing the workload as well as anybody could. In 1999, I came here with the understanding that I would start my day at 10:30, teach my classes and then perform athletic trainer's duty. The following year, Ms. Stone, the principal, asked me to coach the throwers and I accepted. Despite approximately 12 years ago adding a full day teaching workload, a homeroom duty and over the last few years, the addition of three sports, concussion screenings and year-round practice for all sports, while receiving the same stipend, I continued to do my job with the highest commitment. Logistically, I cover collision sports, which is football, then contact sports, field hockey, basketball, soccer and boys' lacrosse, then non-contact sports. Whether or not I'm coaching in the spring, nothing will change with my practice coverage. Some of the off-site schools or teams want me there. I would be leaving four to eight teams at James Monroe to do that, so that wouldn't be feasible. All coaches now are CPR and first aid certified. We've never had a problem in the past with minor injuries, taking care of minor injuries or contacting me or 911 if the need arose. As for spring game coverage, in the past years, I've left weekday meets after the throws to get back to Mari if I was needed. I was often told by our athletic director to not worry about coming back because quote-unquote, "we all know how to call 911." This year, it was discussed how to handle the possible crossover situation and I was told again by her not to, not miss meets, don't rush back because she would get a substitute athletic trainer for those nights. I did as told and attended the meets. In closing, the old saying, "A bleeding orange and black," I think definitely defines me. I love those kids, all the kids. There were no complaint when a coach couldn't be found for indoor season and I volunteered. I loved that position. That was a game changer. For 18 years, I've made it work and represented James Monroe to the best of my ability. I'm asking, please do not take me away from my track family and allow me to do both duties as I have for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, thank you for coming. We'll take about a two-minute break to see if anyone would like to leave before we continue business. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Recommend the Board...
Recommend the board approve the consent agendas presented with the following items: Authorization of warrants, student fees for 2018-19, VPSA Spring 2019 Technology Bond Sale Resolution, School Nutrition Program bids for canned and dry frozen products, School Nutrition Program bids for fluid milk, Head Start approvals, and the Code of Conduct for Fredericksburg City School Board members.
May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second by Ms. Holmes, I mean, it was moved by Ms. Holmes and second by Ms. Rine. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Passed unanimously. Say that again? Yes, unanimously. Okay, the next item, are there action items?
Recommend the board approve the personnel schedules, including the addendum information shown as of July 2, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, before we make, I don't know if procedurally, if I ask now or after we move and second that, to, I was going to ask that we have the change in position contract adjustments in Schedule I separated out for an individual vote.
Okay, so we have rules related to separating out. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It requires a motion and a second, or if there's no second, it dies. If there is a second, then the vote.
Okay, and if it passes and we, then we have a right?
You have, you will have two votes. You'll have the regular personnel schedule, and then you will have the vote on the, which one, which section?
It's Schedule I, and it's the changes in position slash contract adjustments.
Changes in positions and contract adjustments.
Okay, so, so you're making a motion?
I move that we separate the change in position contract adjustments from Schedule I to a separate vote for personnel.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to separate Schedule I changes in positions from the personnel. Any discussion? Should we have a roll-call vote for this? Does this require a roll-call vote? This is personnel? Yeah, I think so, too.
So, is there discussion? I mean, like, can we discuss why? Or are we just, are we now voting on whether or not to move it out?
Whether or not to move it out, and then you would have a discussion.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Because we're not voting on it, we're voting on whether to move it out.
Right.
Okay. And that's roll-call. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion did not pass, and I ask for a motion to approve the Personnel Section of the Agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Boyd and second by Ms. Rine. A roll-call vote, please.
Ms. Rine? Yes.
No.
Boyd?
Yes. Yes. Okay. Thank you. That, a little difficult, but you all cooperated, so thank you. All right, the next item is on you, right? Extra due?
I recommend the board approve the policy revisions as submitted by the Virginia School Boards Association as a first reading.
Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Rine, second by Ms. Palmlywood. Is it you seconding?
Yes.
Okay. To approve the first reading. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay. Passed unanimously. Next item?
Recommend the board elect a voting delegate and an alternate to represent the board at the VSBA Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting of the 2018 VSBA Annual Convention.
Okay.
Still moved?
That, aren't we supposed to recommend? You said to recommend, say that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Recommend the board elect a voting delegate, so there's to be a nomination.
Would anyone like to volunteer?
I'd like to do it.
Good, you do a good job, Jen, and you really do.
Thank you.
Okay. She has to be nominated, or her volunteerism is good?
I think you can take a volunteer. You also need an alternate.
And an alternate.
I'll volunteer.
Never been before, but I could be the alternate. Janan will be there. I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
Well, it's interesting.
Okay, it'll give you firsthand experience. Great, okay. May I have a motion to approve Jenan being the, Ms. Holmes being the delegate, and Ms. Palmlywood being the alternate? Is that correct?
Yes.
Still moved?
Moved by Ms. Boyd?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rine. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Okay, the next item?
Is the adoption of the budget.
Oh, okay.
Recommend the board adopt the FY 2018-19 Operating Grants CIP budgets as revised, approved by City Council on May 8, 2018, and presented in the amounts of forty-four million, six-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, five million, three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, and one million, ninety-thousand dollars respectively.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Still moved?
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, who moved?
Both of us.
At the same time? Okay, Ms. Rine moved and Ms. Boyd seconded. Whoa, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, ayes have it. Okay, now we're, okay. Information items? Are there any additional action items? No? Information items, monthly financial report?
Oh, where did we put, where did we put the cap?
New business.
New business, sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and School Board. Before you have the year-to-date financial report as of May 31, 2018, we still have things going pretty much according to plan. We did have a voucher this month, and that should be at the back of your section. We don't do as many petty cash transactions anymore, but we had one in the past period. One thing I'd like to say is that we've had a pretty smooth year tracking everything, even though we're going onto a new accounting system. And I'd like to recognize Clarence Robinson at this meeting because he's been a big help. He retired as of June the 30th, and I got a call from him today asking if he could help get the new budget onto the, onto the current accounting package. And that's just the way he's been the whole time I've worked here for seventeen years. He has a certain way of doing business, and he's taught me a lot, and I just wanted to show appreciation here for the work he's done. He's helped the school so much, I can't, I can't explain it, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that publicly. So, are there any questions about any specific items on the monthly report that I can field tonight or get back to you on? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I, too, would like to say kudos to Mr. Robinson on his retirement and would like to know if the board would like to send a thank you of any kind to him, because even before you, Mr. Baker, as we've gone through people in that position, the one main part of this was the fact that he was in place and was always willing to assist the school system whenever we needed it, and there were times when we did call on him. So, I'm just asking the board your wishes, but I think it would be a nice gesture to just say thank you to him for his years of service in assisting us. Okay? Is that unanimous? Thank you. Okay. The next item is Mrs. Rine and Dr. Melton will provide an update on the school board and city council subcommittee meetings.
So, we've been meeting with the city council approximately once a month with members, two members from the school board and two members from the city council, and this month we reported on how we, what steps we took, which items were reduced, eliminated from the budget to make our budget work, so that they had an understanding of what implications were to our budget for not funding completely our budget. We also had a report on the feasibility study for the growth over the next few years. We reported to them about developing a threat assessment protocol, what, which, what we're using as far as that goes. And then we also did some brainstorming as far as potentially sharing services with the city as a cost savings measure. We're trying to think of anything that can, you know, move us forward as far as, you know, not spending money on things that are, and funneling more into instruction. Matt Kelly gave us some of his reasons for his, the decision that the city gave for not completely funding us. Basically, it came down to they didn't want to raise the tax, and they, they felt like since they didn't give their, their employees a raise, that they felt that they couldn't give us the full amount. And they also gave us some information about the needs that the city has that needed to be funded. We also spoke, have been speaking about, in talking about the feasibility study, we've been talking about, you know, when it comes time to need a new school. And one of the things that concerned, that we've been speaking about, was the concern about adding more, you know, if we add a new school, that adds so much more to the operating cost every year. So, one thing that I thought was really nice was that Matt stated that, he thanked us for meeting throughout the year, that, that he felt like it really gave some clarity and some understanding to the members that were there about sort of the impact of all the decisions that they make. And I do think it's been a really good group as far as getting some, and understanding between, between us. So, anything, do you have anything to add?
I would just like to say that I thought both Ms. Rine and Ms. Miller Richards did a really good job of informing those council members that were there of the challenges the school division faces. They also did an outstanding job of breaking down the three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars in cuts that the board had to make from the budget to get down and still be able to give a two percent raise and cover the health insurance costs. Like Ms. Rine, I think that potentially it can benefit both city council and the school board, because it, it's an open forum for discussion, and it allows us the opportunity to promote the school division and to actually provide justification for budget and many of the other projects that we're trying to work on.
I know that I have asked, meeting after meeting, about the property that was provided for the building of the police department, and we were back and forth as to whether or not we were promised land for the new school. And in researching, and a fellow board member was very instrumental in helping to bring that out, we did, in fact, learn that we gave the city the property to save the city two million dollars, and as an act of goodwill, recognizing that we would want to improve the relationship so that our budgets would be funded going forward. Of course, there was some board members who felt that we should not have given the property, because years in the future, we would need land for developing for a new school. So, here we are in 2018, as we plan going forward, recognizing if growth continues, that property will be needed for school. And it's my hope that as we continue our conversations with the council, that they understand the sacrifice that we made in giving up the land for the police department to be built, and recognizing that as they continue to approve developments, we will also need land to build another school, which would, in fact, increase operating costs. So, we've got to get to a point with council that if we are meeting with them, we would like a sense of acknowledgement for what we gave up, and it's all documented in Freelance Star, and in hoping that they will join us in planning for our future as the need arises. So, I just wanted to bring closure to my statements that I was making in the previous meetings regarding the property that we gave up as opposed to, while there, there was discussion that we would get, I guess it was idle while, there, nothing was set in stone regarding that, and we can't hold anybody accountable because the documentation says we gave the property up to save the city two million dollars as goodwill, hoping that they would return the same. So, good, good job this year in working with them. I applaud you and Barbara both for the great work that you did in mending that relationship, because it seems that we've been kind of strained at some point throughout our development, and so I'm hoping that we all look forward to working with them together.
We'll continue those meetings?
Yes.
Not just the monthly ones, but the ones where we all meet with them throughout the year?
When we all meet, it's up to you.
We made, we had like two, what, three meetings with city council?
Quarterly.
Two?
We had two quarterly.
Two inner meetings.
Yeah, the joint, the joint board meetings and council would, will continue, but the monthly meetings, we're not meeting in July, we won't meet again until August.
Okay.
I think we'll do that since Barbara's not doing it.
That's up to the chair to determine who the two board members.
Well, I mean, Elizabeth, I was hoping that because, you know, I think it would be good for the previous chair to serve again.
I'm pleased.
If you, okay, so you'll go with me?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay. All right. There's no, we don't have any old business, is that correct?
I have old business.
Okay, so our first item of new business is the, well, do we want to do the calendar discussion?
Actually, put that in as item D.
Oh, okay, that's fine. So, the first item would be the school board work session and regular meeting scheduled for August 6. So, we're looking at a 4:00 PM work session on a comprehensive plan. So we're looking at a 4:00 PM work session on a comprehensive plan. 5:00 PM will be a special meeting and closed session, Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.2-3711A, Section 1 Personnel. 6:00 PM is dinner break. 6:30 PM is a regular meeting, a closed session. And then 7:30 PM, we come out for a regular meeting in the public section. Any comments regarding that schedule at all? Okay, great. Let's see, the VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference will be held in Charlottesville on September 20. Does anyone know at this time if they will be attending?
I think so, as long, I just need to look at Parent Weekend or whatever in, in Richmond. But other than that, yes, I, I would like to.
Great. Okay. Anyone else, please let Ms. Wright know so that she can get us registered.
Okay, I, I could do that.
Okay. For planning purposes, board members may want to note that the VSBA Annual Convention will be held on November 14 through 16, 2018 in Williamsburg. Okay? Do you need anything from us right now, or? Okay.
The dates.
Got it. Great. D, item D, is, would be the calendars next, right? Elizabeth, do you want to lead that discussion?
Sure. So, we, in the past, have always not qualified for a waiver to have a starting date before Labor Day. And now that we are surrounded by, now that Stafford has voted to start their calendar in mid-August, we now have an opportunity to get the waiver from the state to start before Labor Day. So I think we need to maybe ask the staff to investigate what it would take to do that and then also ask for feedback from our teachers and our constituents about what they think about, you know. It's, it's a big step to change the calendar before, but all of our neighbors have changed and so I think we need to at least entertain the idea of, of matching calendars.
And when we talk about matching calendars, we are talking about Labor Day, right? I mean, is that the big item?
Yeah.
Whether we start before Labor Day or after? And I've been a big supporter of after. So I would want to hear the benefits that your staff would see in starting before Labor Day. That, I don't think because our neighbors have done it would be a, a good reason for me. And I'm just giving you heads up in terms of how to present so that we could discuss that. Is there anything else?
One of the things that's come up recently, because the other school systems surrounding us have changed, is that some of our teachers have students who are in the surrounding, who are starting, they have, they have children who are students in the surrounding divisions or vice versa, or they, they work in that and their kids go here. But, and so now their schedules don't mesh. And so, and it's not just a week. We're talking a couple of weeks that they wouldn't have childcare or that they couldn't go on vacation.
A couple of weeks, because, well, if they're teachers, they go back early, early.
Right. So, so it makes, it puts a real burden on some of our teachers who have, who have children who are students in the surrounding areas or the other way around.
It's, it's my understanding that we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't need to come to a decision as a board on how we wanted to proceed until probably around end of January, February-ish.
This is for next year?
For next year, yeah.
Oh.
So my recommendation would be, I, I'd like to recommend that we have a plan for, from now until then of how we're going to gather input. Not just from the staff and the teachers, but also the community. And, and perhaps even have a few sessions or dedicate time at a meeting, whatever's appropriate, to have parents and, and teachers, whoever, speak and discuss the pros and cons of both, both ways so that we can gather all of that information.
Yeah, and to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I will tell you that I have applied for the waiver before and, and got the waiver. It's not that hard to apply for the waiver, but there are timelines. It's been 12 years, but the State Board of Education acts on those waiver requests used to at their March meeting. So they wouldn't consider your request until March of 19. So, yes, you have time.
Okay. And so the board has discussed this before, just so you know. We've discussed year-round school as well. And we've had the community input all around. And at that particular time, the consensus was to stay with our current calendar of after Labor Day. And I think that we should recognize benefits, pros and cons, as it relates to the, to our children more than anything. So I look forward to the discussion and Dr. Melton, you'll get it on our calendar. Okay, great. Let's see, good of the, are we at good of the order already? Good. Do we have any items for good of the order?
Since I, I didn't comment during the personnel discussion, I would just like to, to clarify a couple of things. One, that I am in full support of all of the hires and all of our existing staff. My concerns were only about some of the configurations that we've proposed and it is absolutely not about any individual person.
And Ms. Holmes, I want to thank you for your comments, but I want us to recognize that good of the order would, should not be a personal item. And I think that we would definitely provide an audience for you to say that in the future. But as we think about good of the order going forward, I would like to ask board members to please make it something good of the order that you would like to acknowledge as it relates to our staff, our students. And I will just chime in to say that as of the end of the year, going into the new year, recognize what we have accomplished as it relates to this fine building. The, we've gotten through the past year. Graduations were successful, I didn't hear of any hiccups and you guys are doing a great job. And I think that I want to speak for the board that we appreciate all that you do for us, the students and the city. Anyone else? I will now entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved. Okay, it's moved by Ms. Boyd and second by, was it you, Ms. Ream? Yep. Meeting's adjourned, thank you.